Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, November 22nd, meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd just like to have us observe a moment of silence for Bob Kovac, who passed away yesterday or the day before. Former mayor of Mishawaka, Commissioner.
Who did?
Bob Kovac.
Really?
So please join me in a moment of silence in memory of Bob. First item on the agenda, accounts payout. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Baxmire, how do you vote?
Aye.
Next is Employee of the Month for October, and that is John Law. John is the go-to person when it comes to farm drainage problems. John has been with the county going on 25 years and has a great relationship with both the farmers and contractors. He's on the technical committee of the Kankeke Yellow River Basin Commission and represents St. Joe County in making determinations of what should be done within the watersheds of the Yellow River and the Kankeke River. John Law is on the St. Joseph River Basin Commission. While this commission has more of a water quality mission, John's background is such that he represents well the Office of County Surveyor. He also represents the County Surveyor on the Jade Creek Task Force that protects the only cold-water trout stream in northern Indiana, and he oversees the maintenance of most subdivision drainage systems in the county that were approved since 1975. And John is a valuable asset in the Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth. Please join me in congratulating John Law.
Beach, tell us a little bit about yourself.
I'm an Aquarius.
Okay. It's a fun thing, walking in the park. You like that? What's your music?
An Allstate grad. Went for Department of Natural Resources in Indiana for 10 years, soil scientist. And John was kind enough to offer me a position after my predecessor left, so I jumped on it. The month I started was the same month my daughter was born, so left one job, started another one, and had a new kid, and all in one month. And been here ever since, enjoyed working for, especially for Mr. McNamara, for 25 years, and loved everybody I've worked with.
He's your favorite commissioner.
Oh, man, you gotta have him, yeah, see, all of us.
Okay, there you go. Was your favorite kid?
Which one?
Good answer.
So, thank you.
Come on up, and let's get a picture.
You gonna sing the St. Joe County Commissioner fight song?
I think you should.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you're here, or on this end, or on the side.
Right there, side.
I was in Kansas, yes.
It's like Olend Mills, Shalley O. You get that?
Those are great pictures.
Yeah. Come on here.
You want to sky one of them?
No.
That's okay.
All right.
Whoa, 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 whoa. You don't get leave. Man. Thanks, guys, we gotta go.
Thanks, guys, I gotta go.
Well deserved.
You don't have to stick around, but this is the boring part.
I feel bad.
Kind of like showing up, eating lunch, and then leaving here, all open the door, so you can sneak out.
Moving on.
And you didn't wear your jacket for this.
Next is Resolution R. 22-C-2022.
This is a housekeeping resolution. Statutorily, we have to have certain people in place to respond to certain inquiries from the public or to be in charge of certain items. We had old names that were in our prior resolutions, this just cleans that up and puts in current active employees. That's all this is.
Any questions from fellow commissioners? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution R. 22-C-2022 for the general housekeeping resolution.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Baxmire, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is approval of a letter of engagement.
This is relating to an investigation that's being conducted by the Election Board. Our Auditor's Office received a subpoena to provide evidence and information in front of that tribunal. John Murphy had requested outside counsel just to walk them through the process of responding to subpoena, ensuring that they give full and accurate information. This is appropriate under the statute to provide outside counsel to do so, and that's what this letter of engagement is with Jim Masters.
Any questions?
This is for an attorney, right?
Correct. There are no further questions. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote? Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Baxmire, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is approval of contract with CFS Technology.
This is a staffing agency contract. County's had some issues in filling some of our important open positions. We found out this morning that one of the reasons we wanted this contract was to fill an IT position, and an individual has accepted it. However, we'd still like the approval of this contract, so in the event there are open positions that we have difficulty filling, we can reach out to CFS and have them fill some of those key positions.
Just to be clear, this is only a contingency?
It's a contingency. It's on an as-needed basis. There's no ongoing keys relating to the contract. It's only if a position is filled, and again, I believe the intent is just to use it for very specific key positions in the event we have difficulty filling those positions.
So they're personally picked already, or?
So, I talked to Richard Warfield this morning. They were having difficulty filling an IT position that a gentleman accepted an offer yesterday, so.
So this is something that's been publicized?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And this would be to fill general positions, yep.
Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the contract with the CFS Technology.
Second. Mr. Dieter, how do you vote? Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Baxmire, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next from the auditor, approval of an independent contractor agreement. Susan Bybee.
Hi, this is John Murphy. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, John.
Sue has been a part, she formerly was the payroll manager. She retired a year and a half ago or so. She's been working with the office part-time since then. She's dropped under the limit to be on the county's health insurance, so we checked with Human Resources, and she needs to have a break in service of at least one month in order to qualify for retiree health insurance through the county. So that's what this is doing, where she's gonna be a contracted employee through the end of this year, and then she's in the budget for 2023 at one day per week. So the total cost of this contract is estimated to be about $2,700. So she'll be a contractual person rather than an employee for this month and a half.
John, have we ever done this out of your office before?
No, I don't think out of our office. I think Human Resources may have done this before. They advised us this was the best way to proceed.
Okay. And the reason again?
We wanted to stay working, excuse me, because year-end is kind of a difficult time, obviously, for payroll, so we want to make sure we're fully set.
So this will enable her to qualify for retiree health benefits then, starting in January?
Correct, yeah. She's well over the age to qualify. She has more than the number of years of service, but she was working more than 30 hours per week for part of the year, and so, right, this will entirely allow her to shift over to the retiree insurance.
My office is set up for other employees of other departments. John, correct me if I'm wrong, the intent is to still have her work part-time, but in a number of hours that would not allow her to have health insurance?
Partly, that's partly true. The intent is to, so that she's not an employee for this time period. Her number of hours will be less than what's required for health insurance. She'll be working two days per week for the rest of the year. That's what we had planned on, and the health insurance, I believe, is 30 hours per week minimum.
And then the intent would be, going forward, this would give her an incentive to stay and help you out part-time because she can stay on the retiree health benefits while still working part-time for you?
Right, right, and she's gonna drop down to one day per week. She's really highly experienced, and so it's just something, we don't want to lose all that institutional knowledge. There's a lot of HR work, or a lot of payroll work that's done in January. We have to submit all payroll data to the DLGF to get on their gateway site, so there's just a lot of work to do. We want to make sure it's all done correctly.
Gotcha. And she's available, or she's met the requirements for retiree benefits, so she could just walk away and get her retiree benefits, but she's graciously agreeing to stay on a day a week to help you out during the busy time?
Correct, right. Yeah, she's met the age requirement, and she's also met the 10 years of service requirement.
Oh, but I'm looking, does this set a template for other employees that have other departments that, let's say, Bill's office, hey, I've got this person who's gonna retire, but, see what I'm saying, does this set the precedent that down the road just could happen for other departments and employees?
I mean, it could. I'm sure we've done this in the past where certain employees retire, but then come back and help out on a limited basis. Can't think of anybody else off the top of my head, but.
You know, then in a couple of weeks.
That's true. At least a month.
Sort of the PSAP thing where it was done, but we never wrote it down or documented.
Well, now we got it in writing.
Okay, that's good enough.
And I just think that Susan Bybee, she's been doing a nice job with the County Auditor's Office. Is that right, John?
Yeah, yeah, she's been doing a great job.
We've got a motion for approval on the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Oh.
I'll second her, so move.
I'm sorry, I didn't move it. I couldn't hear it.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Baxmire, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, from Portage Manor, approval to extend the operating fund grant with Transpo.
Hello, this is Courtney Mullins, Administrator for Portage Manor, 3016 Portage Avenue. I am here with Katie Sweet, my business office manager, who completed this grant, and she is going to talk to you about it today. Hi, this was a previous grant that we would like the support of the Commissioners in extending it. This grant helped Portage Manor, for two years already, provide a position in which the employee helps schedule transportation for a resident, also awarding a vehicle in which has made it possible to transport residents to and from appointments and other activities in the community. And if it is awarded again, it will help continue to fund the valuable position as well as provide more transportation so larger groups of residents may go to activities.
And this grant is to fund both the position and the vehicle? Is that, did I read that right?
Yes. And then there's a 20% matching.
Is the 20% already in the budget for next year?
No, it is not.
How's that gonna be funded? How will that be funded, then?
We would have to find the money to fund it. The thing is, this grant has supported two actual full-time employees and their salaries, and so if we do not continue this grant, then we would have to still fund their salaries then for the two. We have a transportation coordinator and a CNA that currently does the transportation, and their salaries are paid for by the Transpo grant. So if we don't continue the grant, then we will have to then pay the salaries for those individuals.
Frank, any thought on this one?
So I... I would say the Board would be supportive of any opportunity to get some outside funds into this, especially since, I would guess that in the budget already, there should be... John, are you still on the call?
Yeah, John Murphy or John?
I am.
I'm sorry, John Murphy.
I am, yes.
The Transpo fund that you set up for Portage Manor for next year, did that... Usually with those grant fund accounts, we don't go and appropriate that money until the grant's awarded, correct?
Right. Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to, that's correct. It's not in the regular budget book, but we will be appropriating the money if this is approved. But we'll have to come up with a match, like Courtney said, out of most likely the regular Portage Manor fund.
That makes sense.
Some other source.
Okay. Because this is, this would, if we are successful in getting the grant, this would be the third year, because it was a two-year grant, and we got it two years ago. So we have gotten the vans, we have the employees in place, we're just trying to keep this program going, because like Courtney said, should we not successfully get the grant, then we would have to eliminate or somehow offset those positions that are taking care of transporting the residents to doctors' offices and other programs that they would need to go to. So it's not a new grant, it's just a continuation, and should they successfully be awarded it, then Courtney would have to go to council and ask at the time that the grant money's appropriated, also appropriate the 20% match out of the reserves at Portage Manor.
I would like to add that these transportation services are something we are required to do. These are for residents who cannot get back and forth to doctor's appointments, and so we either go the grant route, and even if we don't go the grant route, we still have to pay for it then out of our normal funds, because we can't not provide transportation services to doctor's appointments for residents.
More questions?
Good.
Yeah. And there's a motion to approve the Extend the Operation Funding Grant.
Second. Mr. Dieter, how do you vote? Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Baxmire, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to the Health Department, approval of rental agreement for the Law Building.
Hi, this is Amy Rupe, Administrator with the Department of Health, and we are wanting to enter into a contract with the County Commissioners to rent four offices on the second floor of the Law Building for our community health workers to be able to have meeting space as well as a touchdown space for themselves.
Just to add on to that, my office drafted the contract. It's a, it gives us the ability to bring in the grant allowance money from the grant that they've already been given into the county for utilization of rent money, and we've already spoken to Brian in engineering and identified a space, and hopefully that'll be up and running shortly here. It allows their community health workers to have meeting space and additional space that they need.
And these are people who, right now, are dispersed, dispersed and working from home, generally. I remember the one. Correct.
Commissioner, I have a question. Is there any construction that has to be done for these people to move in?
It was very minimal. I wouldn't even call it construction. It was dropping a couple phone lines, replacing some ceiling tiles that are already in a storage room somewhere, a fresh coat of paint, but no, no significant construction. I think they were gonna remove, there was an island in the middle of one of the rooms that was used for a lab previously by CSAP. I think that island's being removed, but other than that.
Maintenance is handling it all?
Maintenance is handling it all, and everything was already in the furnitures, fixtures, equipment budget for the touch-up that needed to be done.
You said Brian and his staff were already out.
Correct. I know, I saw a big dumpster out there a few weeks ago, so I know they were cleaning it out, so. Amy, I don't know if you know where they're at with getting it done, but I haven't been back in there, but it sounded like they were at least making progress.
Actually, we made a call to Brian about 20 minutes ago to find out, and he stated the dumpsters have been filled, I believe, three times before they've been able to get to that part, but he is hopeful that it'll be done here soon. We just wanted to stress that January 1st is the start date we put in the contract, so we would like to have that available to us starting January 1st.
Perfect.
Sounds good.
Any other questions?
Good.
If so, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the rental agreement with the Law Building on the second floor.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Baxmire, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to Infrastructure Planning and Growth.
Good morning, Bill Shalley O. Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on 7th and 11th floor. I have the next seven agenda items, and I will try to be swift with them. The first one is a professional service proposal for General Redevelopment Legal Services with Thorn Grodnick LLP. This is on an hourly basis rate, and the rates and all the documentation is attached to the agenda item. Redevelopment Commission approved this at their meeting on November 9th. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
This continues the services that are already provided.
Yep.
Was their rate for '22 the same, or did they go up?
I believe it's the same as the '2022 rate.
320?
Yeah, I believe that's the same rate that we were paying in the past.
Wait, Mr.... I don't think Mike gets that.
I keep telling him, way underpaid. Redevelopment pays way better.
Was it the same last year, do you think?
I guess so. Yeah, let's not talk about the rate in the next contract, so.
There you go. Any questions on legal services? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve this legal services with Thorn Grodnick LLP.
Second. Mr. Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Baxmire, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is approval of '23 legal services with Barnes and Thornburg.
Again, this is a professional legal service contract with Barnes and Thornburg, specifically to deal with TIF issues and with new, or with existing and new economic development areas. This will be limited only to Redevelopment Commission economic development projects and project areas. This has been reviewed and approved by the Redevelopment Commission. Staff would ask for your approval.
Please.
The question I have is, second paragraph, third line, Mr. Mish. What designates the range that goes from 310 to 650 an hour? What is that?
So it depends which of the staff members within the organization is working on that project. So 610 would be a senior partner, 350 would be a, or 310 would probably be an associate or general staff.
And how is that decided?
That's decided generally by the firm as they're working on a different project.
So they're saying, boy, we need our top senior people for 650 an hour, right?
They can, yes.
Is there anything that we could put in play that says, hey, could you have us, give us a little ledger of when we take Attorney A as opposed to B and C of...
Yeah, so we get a monthly, we get a monthly bill that's broken down.
I know, we get a bill, but do we have something that could, so we know?
Well, so we...
So instead of giving it to the intern, it's a good B for an intern at 3. I'm just trying to define.
Yeah, no, no, it's a great question. And again, so on a monthly basis, for example, Project Honey Suckle, I review all of the monthly basis if there's a question, you know, on a go-forward basis, do we really need two top-level attorneys on this call? Do we need three? You know, we question that and send that information back on a firmly regular basis.
And Bill gets to direct the necessity of certain individuals. So for instance, he can, if he has to call the senior partner, he can say, hey, it seems like this research project is something that can go down to an associate. Can you have them do it? So Bill does have some ability to request certain people on certain projects, and the law firm will push back on certain instances and say, that person doesn't have the necessary knowledge, so we need a senior partner on this one, so they're not reinventing the wheel. When you call Mike Mish on something, I might be able to give you the answer in three minutes. You call my associate, it might take him two hours to research it. Even at my rate, it's cheaper than, you know, having my associate figure it out. So Bill does have the ability to direct some of that, as long as it makes financial and...
And having worked with these firms, knowing the staff and knowing the project teams, we have a good ability to do that, so we do that.
It sounds like it's always after the fact.
Well, on the front end, no. On the front end, no, if it's a new assignment, we do have those conversations before engagement. You know, how is this gonna be laid out? What's the workload? What has been done in the past? What can we use from past projects, things like that? So there is the ability to, to front-end, ask some of those questions and do some of that direction, so.
Yeah, at some point, I think we, the Commissioners, should have, I guess, a philosophical discussion of, like, things like this, that's just like, wow. Because right now, we don't have anything in place from our part to say, before we go to the 3, 650, why didn't, well, this is, again, what you just need to, I think, speak about it. Mr. Dalton, do you have anything you'd like to add to any of this?
I'm going to clarify, I would ask Bill is, does this include bond work?
So this does. This contract does include, but bond work, I think, is where you're gonna head with. Well, I'll let you finish.
So bond work is very specific work that does require a high-level partner, and I get involved in the review of that with Bill because that gets paid out of bond proceeds. So there's a couple more sets of eyes on those proposed budgets.
Does high-level equal experience?
Yeah, it also equals liability on tax exemption. If you want to issue a tax-exempt bond, you get to deal with the IRS for the next 20 years of whether or not it was actually tax-exempt, and so you need the signature of that partner to stand behind it for the next 20 years, or they get sued.
Well, with all, everything we did in this calendar year, and I guess the year before, would John Murphy have the statistics that said 75% of the time, we were working with the 650-an-hour dude?
We would have all of the invoices for that period of time, absolutely.
Yeah, I'll send something Johnson, we can review that, because that's...
You got to know.
And just for clarity, this comes out of Redevelopment Commission's budget, not the legal services, general calendar.
And more specifically, if it's a project like Project Honey Suckle or some of those, there's money given by the company specifically for legal services or for other professional services, so it's...
Honey Suckle paid upfront for these legal services. How much did they pay?
$250,000.
Which has probably gone already.
No, it's not. We're tracking it pretty close. It's not gone yet. There's still a lot of work to be done on that project, so.
So I guess is there a motion to raise my rates to 610 an hour?
There is.
You gonna get up to Dalton territory?
Right.
Jesus.
Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the legal services with Barnes and Thornburg.
Sure, I'll second that, but we will, just for the, for the record, that we will collectively as the Commissioners look into the further distribution of on use. So this is a second by me, Mr. Mish.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Baxmire, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, approval of the 2023 Financial Services Agreement with Sander Dalton.
Yes, so this is a professional service agreement with Sander Dalton, again, to provide the Redevelopment Commission with various financial services and other reporting requirements, things that are done under this contract. Again, hourly rate, and the rate structures are attached to this. Redevelopment Commission approved this at their meeting on November 9th. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Again, I would note that all funds for this contract are paid for out of either Redevelopment Commission funds or out of special project funds like the Honey Suckle fund.
Has this been the same one? Has this been the same amount in the past?
No, this is 5% higher.
Okay, and then, um, so is, has their fee gone up every, 5% every year?
It is not. No, this is the first year that there's been a price increase. And I, and I would tell you, based on the amount of work that was done last year, the amount of work that we anticipate being done in, in 2023, 5% is a drop in the bucket. I mean, they will, they will earn their fee tenfold.
Did we max out of what was supposed to be for this calendar year?
Uh, we're in the process right now of doing a calendar year review of all of the professional service agreements, so we'll have a report on that. We don't have that report.
So if it went up to 2,500, what, what last year was what, 22, 2350 or something in that ballpark?
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to go back and look. I think last year's was a, was more than a.
It was a 5% kick up, it was probably around that 23.
Yeah.
Um, so during, how long have we had, how many years have we had this with?
So yeah, been here since 2015, so since 2015.
Okay.
At least.
At the end of every year, have we maxed out what we have done?
Not, not generally, no, no.
What does generally mean?
I mean, I, I, again, I'd have to go back in and do a full account. We have not done that on a regular basis the first year I've been involved to this level with the financials.
So it here says the contracts for one year do not exceed 25,000. What if there's work that extends past that 25,000 threshold?
Well, if there's a, if, if we extend past those contract thresholds, then we go back to the redevelopment commission for an expansion of the contract.
Okay, and what's the kitty, what's the pool of monies that you would go to out of redevelopment to help?
Well, the, the very, we have four, well, we have multiple TIF accounts that pay for financial services. And if it's a project, area specific project like Honey Suckle or Ultium or one of those, then we would get it specifically out of that TIF fund account.
And as opposed to Barnes and Thornburg, this firm would prefer to give the associates the work, since the partner doesn't have enough time. To be honest.
I have no further questions.
Any questions, sir? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the financial services with Sender Dalton.
Second.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, approval of the 2023 Grant Services Agreement with TAI Ginsburg and Associates.
So this is a professional service agreement with TAI Ginsburg and Associates. They provide the redevelopment commission and the county with grant consulting and legislative advocacy work. They help with letters of support, with coordination with grants. They've been very instrumental in, in several grants, the EDA broadband grant, build grant that we received, Chrissy grant that we received as part of Elkhart and Western Railroad. We just recently are in the process of filing another one with Chicago South Shore. Uh, so they've been very instrumental in helping coordinate those grants. Uh, this is billed on a monthly basis, but with a not to exceed amount of 60, $65,000. Uh, again, this is paid for out of the redevelopment commission funds. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
How does this relate to previous years?
So this is a, a $5,000 increase from past years. And again, based on just cost of materials and, and just general increase, so we, we generally hit the cap on this. I would imagine we will again this year, but they've been very instrumental with, with that, with the work that we're doing, so.
We've hit the cap. Did you have to go back and ask for additional or did you?
No, so we, no, we hit the cap because it was, it was a 5,000 a month. Built on an hourly rate, um, so built on an hourly rate, so five times 6,000 or 60,000, or 60,000 divided by five times, it's 12, so we covered our costs.
Could that have helped you get more grants?
Yes.
Yeah. Good.
Yep.
Questions?
Out of the present.
Yep. If not, do we have a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve the grant services with TAI Ginsburg and Associates.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is the approval of the 2023 Real Estate Services Agreement with Tri-County Appraisal.
So this is a professional service agreement with Tri-County Appraisal Services. This is, again, we've had this contract for multiple years. Steve Hora is the principal. Steve has been very instrumental in helping us gain various contracts and, and agreements and option agreements with the property owners out in the IEC and, and in some other areas throughout the county. This is a not to exceed amount of $25,000 paid on an hourly basis. Uh, we have nowhere near maxed out the cap on this contract. But in the event that we did, uh, we would certainly ask for approval, uh, or new approval. Again, paid for entirely out of redevelopment commission funds. This is a very invaluable contract, the work we're doing.
Do we have a similar agreement with another group?
Uh, we do, with Berkshire Hathaway. They, yeah, that, we actually approved that contract earlier this year for two year period. So they also are doing work for us through the redevelopment mission.
Questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the real estate services with Tri-County Appraisal.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is approval of the IEC Carter Study Agreement 2 with the Lockmueller Group.
So back in November 2020, the redevelopment commission entered into a professional service agreement with the Lockmueller Group. Provide specific tasks on the IEC. One of those tasks was specific to roadway improvements in State Road 2 and intersection connection between State Road 2 and US 20. That project fell to the wayside as we looked more to focus on improvements in 2 and Larison. Uh, in July 2022, the redevelopment commission and the council approved amendment number one to modify the work scope. This amendment two is a further modification of the original work scope to do survey work specific to the intersection at 2 and Larison, work on Larison and Fillmore, Edison and Early Roads. To do survey work, there's a map in this packet. Uh, the contract is actually, again, it's a much larger contract. The scope of work is actually a modification of existing funds within that original approved contract. Uh, the scope of work in amendment number two is for $66,000. Uh, so we'd ask for your approval of this contract amendment. Uh, redevelopment commission approved this at their meeting on November 9th. Please.
The first part of your tutorial there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you said phase one or whatever fell to the wayside? What's, what do you mean?
So we had originally looked at doing a study of, of a in working within that, originally there was a concept of connecting 2 and 20 with a new roadway through the IEC. As we did that study, there were a couple of constraints. Uh, the railroad tracks were constrained, property acquisition was a constraint. State really had a, a, a vision of connecting and moving the designation of, of US 20 to State Road 2, and so by doing that, they would come through the IEC and, and make that connection. That would then bring funding to make improvements, probably at, at 20 in Smilax and 2 in Larison to make those intersection improvement points. The more work that we did with the state on that, the more the state decided it was not worth the value to move the 20 designation to 2. Um, so we modified the scope of the work and, and now we're focusing more on the improvements at 2 and Larison specifically.
Okay, so the original thought or contract for that was how much?
It was $256,400.
Okay. So then that was with the rest of that study?
So that, yeah, so that contract exists and within the framework, we modified the numbers within that contract to do $28,000 for the design of a fiber conduit project within the town. And then these two addendums or two amendments, amendment one and amendment two.
So the original contracts, the one that started proved out that this concept could not occur? Is that what?
Yes.
You're saying that?
Yeah, the value of it, by the time you did property acquisition, by the time you still had a conflict with the railroad, couldn't go under it.
Quarter million dollars got us to the point where this is a bad idea.
We didn't spend, no, we didn't spend, uh, again, we, we spent a fraction of it to start the study. The more work we did on the preliminary engine area.
So how much, so how much should we spend on?
I would, I would have to pull those numbers and, and report that to you.
So it's a fraction or?
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I would, it was, it was a fraction of the total cost. The, the way the contract was broken up, we had milestone points.
A fraction of 250,000 is what? A fraction of a point two or three or, we don't know.
I, I, I'm not going to, I can't give you.
That's what I'm trying to get at. Okay, if we did this, how much did we actually spend to get to a point where saying this isn't going to work, this is a bad idea?
I can certainly pull those numbers for you and provide that to you.
I'm glad they're not proceeding with changing the designation from 20 down to 2. I think that would just increase traffic.
Well, the thought was, it would, well, the thought, the plan was, it would remove the truck traffic through town, which was one of the the principal arguments. And so if all the truck traffic was on 220 through a point and then moved back up and then split it, it would fracture the, or split that traffic density. But again, as, as the state looked at it, the, the intersection with the tracks was, was one of those deciding factors.
Well, the bottom line is, it doesn't change the total amount, we're just shifting.
Correct, just shifting money within the existing contract. So the contract's scope, value is not changed. That's correct.
Well, that's what I was trying to read about too. Scope of the work in amendment two is $66,000, right?
Yeah.
Well, we have most for approval, I think, again, with all of this stuff, we just didn't need to dive into more deeper things to, um, we run up to speed on.
We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve Reba Number 2 with the Lockmueller Group.
Second.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote? Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to approval of the Capitol Avenue Trail Extension. Dragoon Trail Segment Amendment 1 with Christopher Burke.
So this is amendment one to the original contract, the original contract, uh, that's got us preliminary engineering design so that we can do coordination with both Abenmarsh and Laydig Systems. Uh, Laydig is doing a, a major facility expansion, extending water and sewer to their campus. So we needed to do preliminary engineering to determine where we would build a trail between Dragoon and, and Clover Road, uh, which is the eastern limits of Mishawaka on Dragoon. Uh, so as we would look to build this trail next year in coordination with Laydig extending utilities, uh, we need to do final engineering design, so that would be a not to exceed amount of 44,500 to do the engineering. This project, Dragoon project, is actually one of the match projects for City Mishawaka's ready grant application for the George Wilson Park project, which they were awarded. So staff would ask for your favorable approval of this amendment one, so that we can finalize design and get to construction in the spring of next year. Please.
I think that sounds good for that area. I've been there a lot, yes. George Wilson Park.
From a bidding standpoint, this is a good time to get the work done and bid it.
We, we anticipate we would bid this, and then the two projects you rejected at your last meeting, the Riviera, Lincoln Way Riviera Drive project and McKinley project, we'd bid all three together next spring. As we found with the last numbers, uh, the numbers were high. Some of that was the seasonal weather. Coming into weather, we didn't anticipate snow this early in November, so it was probably good we aren't out doing construction right now because it would not have gotten finished. So we anticipate in the spring, we got a better bidding climate, we can do all three at the same time and look for a better number.
I'm good. I'm good.
Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the Dragoon Trail segment with Christopher Bieber Engineering.
Second.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Bill?
Yes.
I mean, I've been there, but.
Yep.
Make sure.
Maybe one inch, that's not on the ground.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Thank you.
Next item is the Board of Commissioners' meeting dates. This is something that discussed and didn't agree on.
What?
I think it would be helpful and increase accessibility to our meetings to try having one meeting a month. I think having the third Tuesday of the month be that meeting, since we honor our employee, not today, but typically honor our employee of the month, business of the month, etc. Give it, give added opportunity for people to be there in person. It'll be interesting to see how many people come and who takes advantage of being online. So I would like to see us approve.
That'll be at 6:00 PM, right on Tuesday.
The third Tuesday of each month is.
That's what I thought up there, yeah.
Do you all agree?
Like, we'll, yeah, give it a whirl, but I think the thing that we didn't think of yet is we're going to have to alert, so there's adequate security for that. Because at night, there's nobody here. Raise your right hand, Mr. Crusoe, we swear you in as the deputy. No, we do a background check, so. So I'll find out how we can sell what's left of Sheriff's Department order. By that time, we'll have a good one.
Any other discussion? If not, do we have a motion?
A motion to approve our meeting dates for 2023.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. With that, we've reached the over comment section.
Good morning. Thank you everyone for your work today. My name is Deborah Durell, 21677, Montan Road, San Pim. Today, I am bringing greetings and thanks to each other as people from the Anandamangal Nation. The daily Thanksgiving that they give, and I think it's appropriate today as Thanksgiving week. Greetings and thanks to the earth, mother of all, to the waters, waterfalls and rains, rivers and oceans, to all the fish life, to the grains and greens, beans and berries, as one we send thanks. Medicine herbs of the world and their keepers, to all the animals and the children, to the trees for shelter, shade, fruit and beauty, to all birds, large and small. And from the four directions, the four winds, thank you for purifying the air we breathe and giving us strength. The thunderbirds, our grandfathers in the sky, we hear your voices. And now the sun, for the light of a new day and the fires of life. To our oldest grandmother, the moon, leader of women all over the world, and the stars for their mystery, beauty and guidance. To our teachers from all times, reminding us of how to live in harmony. And for all the gifts of creation, for all the love around us, greetings and thanks. And for that which is forgotten, we remember, we end our words, and now our minds are one.
Dan?
Dan Caruso, receiver of five conference. First off, a happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Hope you have a safe and enjoy however you enjoy your Thanksgiving, whether it's watching free pro football games or having kids and grandkids over or just figuring out.
Oyster stuffing for Mr. Mish, he's making oyster stuffing.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for meeting on this Tuesday, two days before Thanksgiving, which is the reason for my comments right now. Uh, last week, area plan commission met on the 15th at, it's supposed to be at 3:30, but moved up to 1:30 because the county council's 5:30 committee meeting had to be moved a week early because Thanksgiving was that week. I know this has only been happening since 1863, uh, but Thanksgiving has been the fourth Thursday of November since 1863. I got to checking my records and recalling that I got my butt chewed royally when I got, my girlfriend contacted me at a meeting on the 20, in, in the year 2020, on Tuesday, November 24th, and said, make sure you stop at Kroger's and pick up a bag of potatoes on the way home. I'm making the dinner. And when I get home without the potatoes, it, it was, I. And when I get home without the potatoes, it, it was, I had to run back to South Bend. So I have been told that that meeting had to be moved to the fifteenth of the county council because the meeting conflicted with Thanksgiving. This is what gets people like me, gets our antenna up. This was not an accurate explanation. To me, it seems like, for whatever reason, that meeting was being moved a week early and the APC meeting was being moved two hours early, and it seemed like something was trying to be rushed through. That's what it looks like to me. It just doesn't make sense when I can go to twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one and see that the meetings happened two days before Thanksgiving, the county council committee meetings. But this meeting this year had to be moved up a week earlier, and I was told it's because it conflicted with Thanksgiving. It conflicts with Thanksgiving every year. We still have the meeting. That's what makes people like me say, ah, they're trying to get, they're, they're pulling something. Just please, let's not, let's keep this effort not to reduce public input. And and I, I hope that, again, the withdrawal of the written commitments of of those two items on the agenda last Tuesday, those, those were appreciated to give people different, more time to look and and put comments together. But the fact that the meeting had to happen in the first place a week early, I think, was a little disingenuous to those of us who follow the schedules of these things and get our butts chewed out occasionally for forgetting to do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from people in the room? If not.
Well, I just want to say, and again, he said, wish happy Thanksgiving, and I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy. Best wishes with your family and everything, so, yeah.
Anybody who's joined us online wish to make a comment? Hearing none, I just want to make one announcement. Speaking of meeting dates, next week is the Indiana Association of County Commissioners' conference, and you will receive notice, but we're going to meet on Monday rather than Tuesday, so we have a quorum, just to let you know. With that, any other comments? If not, do we have a motion to recess?
So moved.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Becksmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
So you're going to have to tape, tape The Bachelor or whatever you watch on Monday nights.